Yes to bicycle lane safety, lighted crosswalks, and green arrows. I strongly say no to corruption, no to sexual abuse settlement from taxpayers' money. I say yes to women empowerment, Time's Up, and Me Too movement. I say no to more of the same and yes to a change. If you support decency, family values, respect, support Me Too and Time's Up movement, vote for me. If you face burdensome regulations, harsh late fees, undue penalties, and struggling month to month, vote for me. If you reject sexual abuse, reject thousands of dollars on sex abuse settlement paid with your tax dollars by the city, then vote for me. If you want accountability, vote for me. If you want equality, advancement, and prosperity, vote for me. Vote for me because I will reset priorities. I stand on matters I care, I can, and I will serve you better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Beeber. I'm the Executive Director of Safer Streets L.A. and the Vice President of the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. Many of you know me as the person who ended the abusive and costly red light hammer ripoff, saving Angelino's over $200 million. I've also led the reform of L.A.'s predatory parking enforcement scheme and created a bipartisan coalition to defeat Assembly Bill 666, Sacramento's plan to take away your right to a trial and cripple your individual freedoms. Now, I accomplished these things not as a paid staffer, but as an effective advocate for the people of this city and state. Now, I'm running for city council to continue fighting for our residents and our neighborhoods. Many of us, or our families, came here to pursue the California dream. But that dream is being destroyed. Whether it's the exploding homeless crisis, the rise in property crime, soul-sucking traffic congestion, skyrocketing tax burden, or massive developments encroaching on our single-family neighborhoods, our quality of life here in the San Fernando Valley is in peril. And the sad reality is that virtually all of our problems are self-imposed because we keep electing the same people over and over again. Current and former political staffers, commissioners, and city halls elite, all endorsed by the current power brokers and special interest groups. It has been said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Well, the seed of candidates in this race are handpicked political cronies and city hall insiders pushing their downtown agendas. Well, if you like the status quo, there are plenty of other people in this race you can vote for. But if you want someone who will offer real solutions, if you want something different, you have to vote for someone different. I'm running for city council to be that difference, to give a voice to people who are fed up with business as usual at City Hall, the folks who are mad as hell and who aren't going to take it anymore. I have a record of effective leadership and proven results, and that's why I've been endorsed by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, police officers and firefighters, and scores of community members who simply want an elected official that works for them, not the powerful and connected special interests. If elected as your council member, I'm not going to City Hall, we're going to City Hall, and we're going to change the culture of corruption and incompetence. My name is Jay Beeber, and I would be honored to have your vote on June 4th.
Tahunga Spreading Grounds and other spreading grounds like it are critical for the future of the city's water supply.
LADWP and the Los Angeles County Flood Control District are working together on the Tahunga Spreading Grounds enhancement project. The improved spreading grounds will capture more storm water and help enhance local water supplies.
This facility behind me is roughly over one acre and could fill up to 10 feet deep. That is enough to supply 30 single-family homes per year.
There are currently 20 similar basins of varying sizes at Tahunga Spreading Grounds. The spreading basins are like football field-sized bowls that capture storm water before they percolate into the natural aquifer below and recharge the groundwater. The project will reconfigure the current 20 bowls into 10 deeper basins, vastly increasing the storm water capture capacity.
Every time it rains, we need more capacity to put that rainwater into the ground. We need to get water into the San Fernando Valley groundwater aquifer, then it can become groundwater supply that our wells will pull out and treat and deliver to all the residents.
The Tahunga Spreading Grounds sit on a 150-acre site in Sun Valley at the intersection of Interstate 5 and CA 170, right on top of the San Fernando groundwater aquifer.
We're looking to really turn toward local water resources and not have so much reliance on imported water. And so, part of the plan is to be able to produce more local groundwater, but we have to get water into the ground for the future.
By increasing the size of the spreading basins, the project will double the facility's recharge capacity. On a year that L.A. gets the average amount of rain it usually gets, the Spreading Ground will collect up to 5 billion gallons of water each year to recharge the groundwater basin annually. This is enough water to sustain approximately 48,000 homes all year. LADWP also invests in smaller-scale street-level storm water capture projects that have multiple side benefits.
They minimize local flooding. If there is flooding on the streets, they provide the community open space, and they generally beautify the community with native vegetation, open space, and wildlife.
Beautification is also a part of the Tahunga Spreading Grounds enhancement project's overall objective. Aside from recharging the aquifer, the renovation will allow for passive recreation on community open space.
Mr. Spindler, sit down. Sergeants, would you have, uh, sit down? We're gonna be starting shortly. If everybody would please take a seat. Disrupting, please, you're disrupting the audience. Please take a seat. Okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna begin if everybody would please take their seats. Shh. Okay, Madam Clerk, well, today is Thursday, May 23rd. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bloomingville Bonin, Buscayino Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith Wesson, 12 members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. In the first order of business?
Item one, the only item on today's special agenda is the continued consideration of the Budget and Finance Committee report relative to the mayor's proposed 2019-20 budget for the city, related motions and resolutions. The public hearing for this matter was held and closed on Wednesday, May 22nd.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Krikorian to set the meeting up, set the stage, and give us an overview as to how we're going to proceed. The floor is yours, Mr. Krikorian.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and good morning, members. Today is the day when we get to take up the end result, the work product of the Budget and Finance Committee that considered the mayor's proposed budget over the course of two weeks, including 45 hours of hearings that included hearing from 40 city departments and bureaus and the receipt of more than 300 public comments. We in the Budget and Finance Committee considered over 200 budget memos, including reports back that impact the budget and other matters, all of which came in on time. And so, I want to thank our city departments at the outset for getting the budget memos done on time. That rarely happens, and we got them all done on time. This budget, for the first time in the city's history, has surpassed the $10 billion mark. This budget, for the first time in the city's history, has surpassed the $10 billion mark. We have a budget of $10.6 billion, of which $6.5 billion is in the general fund. And before I go further, since I mentioned budget memos, let me just remind all members that if you wish to make motions relating to this budget, please get your requests into the CLA now, because the CLA and the CLA only can draft budget motions. These cannot be done by our staff, they have to be done by the CLA's office. As of a few minutes ago, we had 25 done, more or less. So that could mean that people aren't submitting a lot of motions, or it could mean that people are planning to submit their motions late. So I just wanted to remind you, the quicker you get them in, the quicker we will be finished today, and the more thoughtfully we'll be able to consider those motions. So as I said, the overall budget is over $10 billion. General fund of $6.5 billion, special funds of $4.1 billion, and notably, the reserve fund in this year's budget has reached, with the recommendations before you, $409 million. That's 6.22% of the general fund. It's the highest our reserve fund has ever been in the history of the city of Los Angeles. It's the highest as a percentage of the general fund in over four years. So we are absolutely going in the right direction in terms of sustainability and our ability to ride through difficult times, which we know will eventually come. The Budget Stabilization Fund, which we created in 2009, is now at $114 million, the highest since it's created. So if you take those two together, we have a lot of resiliency in the budget to be able to deal with the next downturn. In terms of revenue, revenues are up from $6.19 billion last year to $6.5 billion this year, so that's good news. The top sources of revenues, as they usually are, are property tax, licenses, permits, fees, and fines, the utility users' tax, sales tax, and business tax. And all of those, other than the utility users' tax, have shown robust growth, and most notably, especially, the gross receipts tax. The gross receipts tax is up 8.8% over last year, which is a very strong indication of the strength of the Los Angeles economy and the success of our business community. So I'm gonna go through a few of the highlights, and then the CLA will take over and present some overview, and then we'll go through page by page and consider the budget memo. First, in terms of homelessness, this budget includes $457 million of investments in permanent housing, temporary shelter, services, and facilities to help homeless Angelenos. This is the largest investment the city has ever made to address the homelessness crisis. It includes funding to continue five existing safe parking sites and to add six new ones. This includes funding for dedicated law enforcement patrols relating to the Bridge Home facilities to ensure that areas around the Bridge Home facilities are kept safe for all concerned. The budget includes $281 million from Measure HHH, and much of that will be directed towards 27 new permanent supportive housing and affordable housing projects, which will provide over 2,000 housing units. That's a $6 million improvement over the 2018 budget. In terms of public safety, as always, the police department has the largest share of the budget at $1.7 billion. That includes, for the first time, an appropriate and fair assessment of actual estimated police overtime. At, uh, a 40% increase of overtime to $165 million. That's a significant change from past years where we've essentially underfunded overtime and just hoped that the police department would be able to manage within that budget. This fully funds anticipated overtime. The budget also includes $14 million in technological upgrades and systems for LAPD, as many of you have heard, I'm sure, from officers and captains in your districts. The department has been woefully lacking in its technological upgrades, particularly around personal computers, dispatch systems, and otherwise, this is investing in upgrading those systems. The fire department includes $687 million. Hiring for the fire department will continue to keep up with attrition, and in addition, we'll be funding expanded advanced provider response units, fast response vehicles to more efficiently dispatch resources and provide emergency medical services and bring response times down. Very importantly, for many of those, and Mr. Smith, I think you'll be particularly pleased to hear this, for the first time, after many, many years of trying, we will be funding a standards-of-cover study in this year's budget, so that we will finally be able to make a comprehensive review of where our fire resources are most needed and how to fully fund them. In terms of transportation, the budget includes many millions of dollars in Measure M revenues, which will support our Vision Zero programs, as well as traffic safety measures, including $27 million for new traffic signals and flash and beacons. And for the first time, after, again, many years of effort, I'm pleased to say that now all part-time traffic officers have been converted to full-time positions. It's something this council has sought to do for many years, and that has been achieved. In terms of street services, there will be additional funding for tree trimming, $200 million for street improvement repairs, $150 million for pavement preservation, $25 million to execute a new failed street program, because as many of you know, once a street becomes failed, very often, it just goes on the forever-to-be-ignored list. Well, this is going to start chipping away at that problem by providing $25 million to address some of the most severely damaged streets in the city. There's $42 million set aside for sidewalk repair, $3 million for alley paving, another area that's too often ignored in Mr. Coretts's district and many other districts. This has been a real challenge to get alleys fixed, so we have dedicated funding for that. And then, very importantly, finally, we're funding an urban forestry management plan and tree inventory study, so we can finally get to work at providing a healthy tree canopy for the city and provide the tree trimming crews to maintain its health. Rec and Parks will have some significant increases in a number of areas to include increased recreational programming, especially for seniors and youth, universal play facilities, homeless encampment cleanup specific to parks. There's over a million dollars to continue Swim LA and a million dollars for universal play as well. Sanitation will have significant expansion in the Clean Streets Hope Teams of $6.4 million. And we're providing funding of over a million dollars in the UB to help bring sewer construction crews that are currently being contracted in-house, hiring city employees to do that sewer construction work. In terms of community beautification, this budget will continue to fund graffiti removal and community cleanup in a significant way. We have added additional funding for new environmental programs, including wildlife corridors study, a climate emergency program allocation, biodiversity expert for the city, and, as I mentioned, a significant investment in, once and for all, taking care of our tree canopy. There's also funding to support, to continue to support contractual services for the petroleum administrator, so that that office can take a more active role in protecting the public from the impacts of the oil and gas industry. Now, so those are just a couple of the highlights. We'll go into more detail as each member has questions about the report. But I do also want to mention, as I always must, that for all the good news that there is in this budget, for all the progress that we've made in so many areas in this budget, risks remain that we all need to be mindful of. We're still in a very, very long period of recovery from the Great Recession and expansion of the economy. Everything that goes up must come down. And there will come a time when revenues soften, when the economy eases. At some point, there will probably be a time when we will experience another recession, and we need to be prepared to be able to deal with that. That's why the reserve fund and Budget Stabilization Fund is so critically important. There are also, of course, uncertainties with our very uncertain federal government and its relationship with the city of Los Angeles, so federal funding of many of the programs that we depend upon is always questionable. We continue to try to work to bring litigation costs down, and we're making progress with risk management, but be mindful of the fact that there's always those outlying cases. There's those big cases that can come in and that we have to be prepared to deal with that may be outside of the scope of this budget. And then there's workforce costs. This budget assumes pay increases that have already been negotiated and agreed to, but no others. And so the agreements that are currently being negotiated and that will be negotiated during this budget year, there is no money set aside for pay increases that are not already agreed to. So be mindful of the fact that whatever we do in closing those agreements will have to come out of this budget in some other way. It's not set aside already. And, um... So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the CLA, if I can get my mic down a little bit. Thank you. So I'm gonna go through the process here. So the CLA will give an overview of the budget, and then we'll go through page by page with each page of the committee report. We will approve each page as we go unless members, any member, sees something on that page that you would like to call special for further discussion. Just call it out by item number or paragraph number, and we'll hold those aside. If we go through a page, no member calls a matter special, that page will be considered approved and will continue to move on. So one last reminder, again, if you want to submit any motions relating to this budget, get it into the CLA right away, so that we can consider those in a packet at the end after the presentation. I will say that anything that affects the budget, though, I will ask the council president to refer to the Budget and Finance Committee. We will not be making changes in this budget that affect appropriations or the expenditure of money today. That will have to be considered separately by the Budget and Finance Committee. And so with that, I'd like to turn this over to our CLA's office.
So, good morning. The item before you is the Budget and Finance Committee report on the proposed budget. Bear in mind, council members, these are the changes to the mayor's proposed budget. The full budget is before you, so to the extent there are any changes, as Mr. Krikorian has indicated, our CLA staff is in the back to help prepare motions. Mr. Krikorian already provided an excellent overview of what is before you in terms of the mayor's proposed budget, so I won't, I will not have anything else to add to that, but the one cautionary item, as Mr. Krikorian indicated towards the end of his comments, was the issue of expenditures that are not included. And so one of the most concerning items, of course, is the outstanding labor agreements that will be expiring on June 30th, and just as an indication of how large that number could be, for each 1%, for those outstanding labor union contracts, is equivalent to about $24 million, and there is no funding provided for that, and that's just 1%. And then, to the extent that you add pension costs to it, that cost will exceed $32 million. So that is the caution about this budget. There is a very balanced approach that was taken by your committee and as well by the mayor, primarily to balance the restoration of services, keeping reserves at a high level to account for any changes in the economy that might happen. But, once again, COLAs for the coalition, or not the coalition, but COLAs for the labor agreements that are expiring in June are not included. So Andrea is going to walk through the committee report. As Mr. Krikorian indicated, we will be going page by page. To the extent that there are any specials, please call those specials, and we will go back and have further discussion on those items.
Good morning. If you'd like, we can take up the requested reports and special studies, which is in attachment two, first. Those recommendations are R1 through R130. We usually take these up all at once.
Yes, we will proceed in that fashion. So, members, let's open the roll, close... Mr. Smith?
I did push my button. So the request I have is on Transportation, page 13 of the section. Attachment two is, I would request that the Department of Transportation report back to the Finance Committee on the potential negative impacts to the budget if Prop 516 is passed. 516 will eliminate our ability to collect traffic tickets, to boot cars, and to tow cars away. This will have a tremendous dilatory effect on the Department of Transportation. I'd like to report back on that.
Okay, as amended per Mr. Smith's concern. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's continue.
Um, starting on page one, the recommendations begin, the heading is evaluating budgetary compliance and control for that first page. These are recommendations one through six.
I don't see any specials, so let's vote on the page. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Please continue.
Page two, we have recommendations seven through 13.
Okay, I'm looking, I don't see any concerns, so we'll vote on this one as well. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page three, recommendations 14 through 24.
Okay, no one's on the queue. Let's vote on this issue as well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page four, recommendations 25 through 32.
25 through 32. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page five, recommendations 33 through 41.
I don't see any concerns on page five, so let's prepare to vote on it. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page six, recommendations 42 through 52.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on page six as well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page seven, recommendations 53 through 60.
Okay, page seven, all right, we can move forward with this one as well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Page eight, recommendations 61 through 70.
Page eight, 61 through 70, I see no concerns. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page nine, recommendations 70B through 77A.
And now we're on page nine. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page 10, recommendations 77B through 79.
Okay, page 10, let's prepare to vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Page 11, recommendations 80 through 86A.
Let's prepare to vote on page 11. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page 12, recommendations 86B through 95.
We're on 12, page 12, members. Let's prepare to vote on page twelve. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Page thirteen, recommendations ninety-six through one-oh-one.
Page thirteen, open the roll, close it, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Page fourteen, recommendations one-oh-two through one-ten.
Page fourteen, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page fifteen, recommendations one-eleven through one-seventeen.
Page fifteen, members. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page sixteen, recommendations one-eighteen through one-twenty-five.
Okay, let's vote on page sixteen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page seventeen, recommendations one-twenty-six through one-twenty-nine.
Okay, page seventeen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page eighteen, recommendations one-thirty through one-thirty-four, A through D.
Let's, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Herman, put the sign down. All right, continue.
Page nineteen.
Down, Mr. Herman? Yes.
Page nineteen, recommendations one-thirty-five through one-forty, A through C.
Page nineteen, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty, recommendations one-forty-one through one-forty-four.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-one, recommendations one-forty-five through one-fifty-one-A.
Okay, now we're on twenty-one. Page twenty-one, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-two, recommendations one-fifty-one-B through one-fifty-seven. We do have an amendment to item, to recommendation one-fifty-seven. The $5 million amount should be changed to $3,321,000 to be offset by the same amount. So this is still a zero-sum total. That's on item one-fifty-seven.
Okay, so let's vote on that as adjusted. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-three, recommendations one-fifty-eight through one-sixty-one.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-four, recommendations one-sixty-two through one-seventy. We also have an amendment on recommendation one-sixty-four. The last two lines of the recommendation should read, "Design, Construction, and Inspection of Safety-Related Traffic Signal Projects to be provided through interim appropriations from Schedule V Special Gas Tax Improvement Funds, SB 1." So we're adding the words "through interim appropriations."
Okay, well, let's prepare to vote on this page with item one-sixty-four amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Page twenty-five, recommendations one-seventy-one through one-eighty-one.
Okay, on page twenty-five, members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-six, recommendations one-eighty-two through one-ninety.
Page twenty-six, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-seven, recommendations one-ninety-one through one-ninety-eight.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Page twenty-eight, recommendations one-ninety-nine through two-hundred-and-six.
Okay, page twenty-eight. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Page twenty-nine, recommendations two-hundred-and-seven through two-hundred-and-twelve.
Okay, on this item, or on this page, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
The following page is attachment one. These are Exhibit H, Implementing Instructions and Ordinance Changes, Recommendations H1 through H6.
Okay, now let's vote on attachment one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we've already gone through attachment two.
Okay, why don't we recess for a few minutes? Okay, good work. Mr. Kukorian, did you want to say?
Uh, thank you, members. We're going to recess now to wait until we get our first packet of motions. I, I will note, there's a little disagreement. This may be a first, the first time that there has been no items called special in the budget. Mr. Hale seems to remember that two or three years ago, we might have done it. But it's a tribute to the work of the CLA. I think that, that this memo's been put together in a way that none of us have any questions or concerns, so duly noted, thank you.
Let's don't make light of it, that you guys worked hard.
No, I'll, I'll get, I'll get into it a little bit more later.
Worked hard, but we're in recess right now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Herman, it's your last warning.
Mr. Spindler and Herman, your constant chanting is disrupting the ability of people to talk. Please be quiet. You're disrupting city business.
So members, if you want to get a boat, a budget motion in, let's please do it now. We're gonna be starting soon. We have some that have been processed. We have about eight or nine that are being processed now. So if you have any desire to put in additional budget motions, please do it now. Mr. Corretts?
No sound.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, as we've all been trying to do budget reviews, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman have been constantly disrupting from the moment we got in session to currently, and I think they should be asked to halt this behavior or they should be removed.
Okay, well, this will definitely, I will not mention anything to the two of you again. You have been disrupting this meeting. The next time I speak to it, it will be to ask the sergeants to remove you from these chambers.
...
Okay, if everybody would take their seat, we're gonna go back in the session. Everybody, please, take a seat. Okay, Ms. So, why don't I recognize you right now as we go through these last items?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. So, you have two packets of motions, number one through twenty, as well as A and B. We understand there is possibly one more motion coming in, a motion number twenty-one, and that should be it. So, Mr. Kocorian, would you like me to go through the motions?
Yes.
So... Motion number one is a Rue Rodriguez motion relative to instructing the Bureau's street services to report on the feasibility of developing and implementing a comprehensive education outreach program relative to the preservation, maintenance, and growth of the city's tree canopy.
And, Mr. President, that's a report back, so I'd recommend approval of that motion.
So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes. Motion number two is a Rue Rodriguez motion relative to adding a programmer analyst and public information director in the office of city clerk without funding to provide system support for neighborhood council financial management system and business improvement, district portal, and develop public education campaigns. This has no general fund impact as no funding is provided.
And, Ms. President, on this one, although it has no immediate general fund impact, it is adding positions which will have pressure on the pension systems, which will have future budget impacts, so I'd ask that that be referred to budget and finance.
So without objection, and we will refer that to the committee. Continue.
Motion number three is a Sadio Smith motion relative to adding funding to resurface alleys in Council District One. This would increase the street services budget by $500,000. This does have an impact to the general fund.
So we'll refer this to committee as well.
Thank you.
Motion number four is a Wesson Harris-Dawson motion relative to providing funding to support the Planning and Land Use Committee in light of increased and unique technical legal workload demands. This would transfer funding from the Planning Department to the city clerk in the amount of $160,000. No general fund impact.
Mr. Kocorian, you wanna give some guidance on this since the funds are being transferred?
Yeah, I'd ask that be referred to budget and finance.
Okay, we'll refer this to budget and finance as well.
Motion number five is a Sadio Buscaino motion to instruct Housing and Community Investment Department to report on appropriate staffing and funding necessary to implement an affordable housing covenant preservation program.
Okay, so we'll vote on this one.
We can go ahead and approve that.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion number six is a Harris-Dawson Blumenfield motion. This would add substitute authority to the Building and Safety Department. We understand that there were a couple of changes requested by CD eight. The position authorities would be a four structural engineering associate fours, two senior heating and refrigeration inspectors, two senior plumbing inspectors, one mechanical engineering associate four, and one senior fire sprinkler inspector. This would provide authority to reemploy retired engineers and inspectors to assist with workload. There's no impact to the general fund.
Great idea, Mr. President, but since it's creating these positions, we'd ask that the bureau...
Let's defer that or refer that to budget and finance. Next item.
Item number seven is a Rue Rodriguez motion to regularize existing authorities in the Controller's Office for one existing fiscal system specialist two to provide support for the FMS procurement module and one existing controller aide to serve as a liaison to elected officials and departments.
So this too, I would ask be referred to budget and finance.
Next.
Motion number eight is a Wesson Martinez motion. This motion would provide resolution authority for an accounting record supervisor, two management analysts, one senior administrative clerk, and one programmer analyst, two, to the office of the city clerk to enhance administrative services contracting function.
For similar reasons, Mr. President.
Okay, so we will refer this to budget and finance as well. Next.
Motion number nine is a Wesson motion, Price-Buscaino, Harris, is that Harris-Dawson? Motion to provide resolution authority and funding for a senior management analyst, one, to support the R-Cycle LA program. This is an existing program in the city. Funding would be provided through a decrease in the GCP budget for the Embrace LA line item and increasing salaries for the ITA department.
Recommend approval, Mr. President.
So, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion number ten is a Sadio motion to provide funding to the Police Department to add eighteen sworn positions to conduct foot patrols in the Hollenbeck, Rampart, and northeast areas. This would increase the Police Department budget by $7 million for a total impact of $11.16 million to the general fund.
I think it would be appropriate to refer that one to budget and finance, Mr. President.
Are you sure? You don't wanna just vote on this one right now? Okay, that'll be...
Mr. Sadio believes that you don't get what you don't ask for, I guess.
Okay, we will refer this item to budget and finance. Next.
Motion number eleven is also a Sadio motion to add funding for a Council District One disaster assistance pilot program to assist households displaced after a fire. This would add $250,000 to the Housing Department budget. That would be an impact to the general fund.
Yeah, so we'll refer that.
Motion number twelve is a Buscaino motion to request Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority to report on the status of real-time electronic system for tracking shelter bed availability and report on other ways that expanding or enhancing technology will improve efficiencies and transparency. This is a motion to report. No general fund impact.
Recommend an a vote.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion number thirteen is a Buscaino motion to provide funding to expand the project Save Services in Council District Fifteen in the Watts community. This would increase the general city purposes budget by $250,000. This would impact the general fund.
So, we will refer that to committee.
Yes, please.
Motion number fourteen is an instruction to the CLA and the CAO to identify and report in forty-five days on $2 million for the Destination Crenshaw Streetscape improvements, measured from sources including Measure R, M, and SB one. This is an instruction to report with no impact to the general fund.
That should be referred to committee, please.
We will refer this as well.
This is a motion to report with no impact to the general fund. We would be reporting back to the appropriate council committees on any identification.
Okay, I'm sorry. So as long as the report's coming back to budget and finance, then we can go ahead and approve that.
Okay, so let's, on that item, then, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. President, and the next packet of motions is motion number fifteen. This motion would add a city planner, two planning associates in the Planning Department to support the specific plan maintenance unit for the Central East region. This would have an impact to the general fund. And I might want to add that as part of the Budget and Finance Committee actions, there were six positions that were added to the budget for the Central and East region as well as for the city as well. So, included the West and South Harbor, so there were positions added. This would provide an additional $315,000, and this would impact the general fund.
So we'll refer this to committee.
Number sixteen is a Buscaino motion. This would amend the proposed budget to instruct the Bureau's street services to conduct a citywide alley assessment and report with prioritization ranking and a plan to equitably spend the $3 million for alley paving provided in Measure M. As, the proposed budget as it stands right now provides a different allocation formula. This actually would amend that allocation formula to have it come back to council for further discussion.
So you wanna refer that? So we will refer that as well.
Motion number seventeen is a Rue motion that which would provide regular authority for one special investigator with no funding to support the fraud, waste, and abuse unit. This would be in the Controller's Office, I believe. It has no impact to the general fund, no immediate impact to the general fund.
But we, unless you say differently, we should refer that?
Yes, please.
Motion number seventeen would amend the proposed budget. This is a Harris-Dawson motion to add funding to implement the Promise Ticket Application Pilot Program in Council Districts Eight and Ten through the Innovation Fund. This would provide funding to the Transportation Department. One slight modification to this, while it has no impact to the general fund, the funding is actually in the non-departmental special fund, page 236 of the budget, and if council wishes to approve this, the most appropriate way to do that would be to reduce the general fund allocation to the Innovation Fund.
So, that would, should be referred then?
Referring.
Motion number nineteen would transfer funding, I'm sorry, it's a Wesson Rodriguez motion, to transfer funding from the City Hall Lighting Public Art Project to the Unappropriated Balance and instruct General Services, Cultural Affairs, and the Mayor's Office to report on the project, including funding, process, protocols, budget-specific improvements, and procedures. This would move $300,000 from the project into the Unappropriated Balance for further discussion later during the year. No impact to the general fund.
Okay, so we will vote on this one?
Yes.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion number twenty is a Wesar-Wesson motion to add funding to continue one senior civil engineer to support the downtown L.A. streetcar project. This proposes to take funding from Proposition A to support the position. This would have no impact to the general fund.
Refer, refer to budget.
And I believe there's one more motion, and I'm asking our staff if there is one more motion to let us know. No?
No, I'm told this is...
So, council members, the last two motions in your packet are motions A and B, and this is an instruction to your staff to prepare the budget resolution, which would be the final action on the budget, and we, along with the CAO and the city attorney, will provide that budget resolution to you probably in the early part of next week, which would be your final action on nineteen-twenty proposed budget.
Okay, well, on this, these items, why don't we combine them, Mr. Kocorian, and then vote on them? Okay, so let's, AM, yeah, we'll just vote on it at one time. Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
We're done.
Okay, we didn't get them combined, so now we'll vote on B. So let's vote on B. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Kocorian, I believe this is it. I'd like to kick it over to you.
Well, thank you very much, President, Mr. President. That, that actually concludes our work, members, on the budget. So thank you all very much for an incredibly smooth process. I think this may have broken...
That's where the round of applause is.
May have broken our time record. Can you just break our time record? I, I think it's especially important to put this... So, I, I think it's especially important to put this budget, as easy as this seemed, into a larger context, Mr. President, because a few of us that I see around, Mr. Kratz, and Mr. Wissar, and Mr. Smith, were here, and of course, much of our staff, were here at a time when the city was literally teetering on the edge of bankruptcy, when Mayor Riordan wrote an op-ed to the Wall Street Journal saying that bankruptcy was inevitable, when we were discussing in this council chamber laying off 6,000 employees to find our way through the Great Recession. That's how bad it was, and it's easy to forget that. But we've come a long way since then. We have a budget now that meets the priorities that this council has expressed, that's accomplished, a degree of resiliency that was unimaginable back then. So, there's been tremendous progress that's been made. We still have a ways to go. There's still a number of our major departments that still have not fully recovered since the Great Recession. Wreckin' Parks, ITA, Transportation, others that are still lagging significantly behind where they were a decade ago. And so, we still have more progress to make, but we should all be proud of the progress we've, we've made so far. And so, I want to first, the budget requires many hands to get done, and I want to first start with expressing our appreciation to our mayor, Eric Garcetti, and his great budget team for presenting us with a proposed budget that was one of the easiest ones to work with, I think, that we've had in, in our time here. And so, I especially want to recognize, in addition to the mayor, of course, Matt Zabo, Miguel Sangalang, Greg Good, and for the first time as the mayor's budget director, Diana Mangioglu, who has done a tremendous job in jumping in and preparing a budget that really anticipated the needs that this council had, so that there wasn't a lot of fireworks, frankly. I want to also thank, of course, our great CAO, Rich Llewellyn and his staff, and especially Ben Seha, Jacob Wexler, and the Budget Memo Squad, because, as I said, we did over 200 budget memos this year. Incredible workload, and they were done quickly, turned around quickly and thoughtfully. So, I want to thank Jennifer Lopez, Mara Legaspi, Zara Bukirin, and Janelle Irving from the, from the Budget Memo Squad for doing such a fine job, and of course, our CLA's office, Sharon So, Karen Calfean, Andrea Galvin, and the rest of their team. Sharon, I think this is your, how long have you been doing this? 25? 25 years. 25 years. And so, we couldn't ask for a better team representing the interests of this council in this budget than we have with the CLA's office under Sharon's leadership. The Budget and Finance Committee functions as it does because of our clerk, Andrew Choi, and our previous clerk, Richard Williams, who has been with us, helping us through for so long. I want to thank them, and our city attorneys, Streffan Fabblo and Tinea Isagiri, who sometimes get us through difficult thickets as well. Mr. President, I want to thank you and your office for tasking me and the other members of the committee with this responsibility, and your guidance, your, the relationship that you've developed with this mayor over the budget has really been an important part of seeing us through the difficult times and helping to build the foundation for the better times. And so, I want to thank you and in your office, Andrew Westall, Ed Johnson, and Justin Wesson, who've just been great partners in this effort, and our committee members. Members, the Budget and Finance Committee, I think it's safe to say, works longer hours and more meetings and harder meetings, I think, than, than most people can imagine. And I really am grateful to each of the members who devoted so much of their time and effort and attention to detail in creating this budget. Council member Bonin, Council member Kratz, Council member Blumenfield, and for the first time, our vice chair, Council member Price, who jumped right in and did a terrific job. And, of course, none of us can do this without our budget advisors. So, the staff of the Budget Committee members, Marissa Alcaraz, Krista Klein, David Hirsch, and Jeff Jacobberger, all outstanding contributors to the work product that you see before you. To all of the general managers who have sat nervously through this hearing, and all of our previous hearings, and their departmental staff, thank you all for your, the work that you do in anticipation of the mayor's budget, and then in response to what the Budget and Finance Committee does as well. And then, lastly, I'd like to thank my amazing staff, starting with my chief of staff, Cara Trocian, my entire policy team, transportation team, planning team, who all contribute to this work, and I want to make special note of Anna Hova-Sapian, who took over this year as my planning director, I'm sorry, my policy director. Not, not, your, your territory is not expanding that much. Planning director, and for the first time as budget director as well, who did a magnificent job, seamless transition in taking over this work, which is super hard work. And then, lastly, and not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the work of Matt Hale, who for eight years now has participated in the shaping of the city's budget and is passing the baton on now to Anna, but truthfully, this city would not have survived as it had, emerging from the precipice of bankruptcy to the point that we're at now of budgetary health if it weren't for the work of Matt Hale. And so, to all of you, I'm eternally grateful, and to everybody else who's worked behind the scenes in all of our departments, all of our agencies, thank you. This has been great, great work. And with that, Mr. President, I think our work is done here.
Let's have another round of applause. And the class act, that is Paul Kukorian, would make sure that he took the time to identify everybody who, who's done any, anything to help with the budget, from the general managers to our staff, to the CLA, CLA's office, and the great members of this council that are on the Budget and Finance Committee. But I have to just say this, that Mr. Kukorian has been, for the past eight years, the glue that has held that committee together. As he said when he began his remarks, when this process first began under his leadership, Mayor Riordan and other individuals within this city indicated that this city was headed towards bankruptcy, and they may very well have been correct. If it wasn't for your leadership, if it wasn't for your creativity, if it wasn't for your work ethic, they could have been right. But thank God, they were wrong. Let's give our Budget and Finance Chair the round of applause that he deserves. And, Mr. City Attorney and sheriffs, I have been warning Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman all day, so I now want them removed for making goat noises, and I want them removed now. Is there any additional business before, and Mr. 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 City Attorney, as you can, as you can tell, they are continuing to disrupt this meeting. So, there's no more business, or is there?
The desk is clear.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Mr. Kukorian.
I'll wait, I'll wait until Mr. Herman is done disrupting the meeting so that I can speak. All right.
Yes, sir.
Slight oversight, Mr. President. We haven't yet voted on the budget. We, we...
And who reminded us of that? Sharon, maybe?
We voted on all the motions, but now, as amended, we need to vote on the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendations as amended.
Well, let's do that, okay? Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, just to make sure I'm sure, is there anything else?
No.
That we have forgotten. All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.